Today is Tuesday, excuse me, May 8th, and the Board of Commissioners meeting is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Will Commissioner Hodges please lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Please stand.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we only use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Please remain standing for the pledge of flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther.
Present.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Oakley. Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Here.
Mayor Black.
Present. I just want to make an announcement before we go any further, and that's that the livestream is only working facing the commission, and nobody in the public will be filmed tonight for some reason, I don't know. So next we have public comment, and I would just like to remind everybody that please speak clearly into the microphones, state your name and address. And I also want to say, I believe that most people in this room are aware of the allegations of the ethics violation against Commissioner Oakley. Unfortunately, she's out of town and unable to attend the meeting this evening, but I just want everyone to know, this is not a forum for unproven accusations against any of the commissioners. I hope everyone will be respectful and civil with their comments, and I will now open up to the comments. Mr. Speaker.
My name is Jerry Klyet. I live at 14040 Marguerite Drive.
Microphone.
Can you hear me?
No.
No.
Microphone.
Microphone. Jerry Klyet, 14040 Marguerite Drive, Madera Beach. I'm here to address the city and residents, to publicly apologize to John Bennick Hendrix. I repeated a statement about John I believed to be true, but it turns out it was not true or comport with the facts. John, I am sorry for my mistake. John Hendrix is an active member of our city community, and as such deserves all the respect and privacy afforded to each of us. I apologize for my mistake. Thank you.
My name is Anton Philip. My address is 715 East Bird Street, Tampa, Florida. I'm here in regard to two properties we used to own, or we own, at 14107 and 14133 Gulf Boulevard. There were two old apartment buildings, smaller buildings, which we demolished. The buildings were very old, and we had immense problems with electricity, with water, water pipes breaking. So the only way to resolve the problem was really to demolish the building and build something new, and we are in the progress, in the process of doing this. Now, at the time when we demolished the building, we had water bills, even the building was two-thirds empty. At the end, it reached $5,000, mostly pipes broken, leaks. I have pictures. So when we demolished the building, we get a cut-off, a cut-off permit for the plumbing, for the water sewer, and the building was demolished in January 2016. I don't know why, but we were charged every month with water and sewer bills, with all kinds of different bills. I don't really fully understand how these bills come together, but at the end, it was $18,000 what we were charged, and what the city filed a liens against, and now we have to pay off this lien because we get a construction loan. Now, this is not right on several levels. First of all, from the beginning, as I said, the $5,000 bill was already ridiculous. Now, after the fact, after the building was demolished, we keep getting charges and charges. We have brought up the issue with the city treasurer, I think his name is Walter Pierce, and he already has, he advised us that apparently this bill is part of Pinellas County and part of Madera Beach, it's complex. He has, he's in favor of what the city parties $5,000 to be reduced, and I'm here today, and I understand that it requires the city commissioner's approval in order to get this credit. So I'm here today to ask you to approve this credit, which apparently Mr. Walter Pierce is in favor of. Thank you very much for the time you gave me.
Thanks.
Nice evening.
Lori Tyner, 4996 Miramar Drive, Madera Beach. I am the GM of Snatch Shack, and I'm here to give you a little bit of news. I'm glad in the meeting right before now, you mentioned about the straws. Well, about a month ago, I took away our plastic straws, and we went to biodegradable paper straws on demand, I mean, when you asked for it, you know, so it's, you know, there's no rule out there for us to do it, but we just want everybody to know, we're concerned about our environment, and we're doing all we can. So there we go, just wanted to let y'all know.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thanks.
Steve Kočak, 15301 Second Street East, Madera Beach. I'm not going to bring anything up about the commissioners' ethics issues. That's already been touched on, and that'll move forward on its own speed. But what the board, I think, should start thinking about, and maybe put in a workshop item, is legal fees that may be associated with that. If she was not in the performance of her duty as a commissioner, she's not entitled to any legal fees for the city. I believe that's going to be correct, that something's going to come out. So if she was there, and she wasn't in the performance of her duty, and it turns out that she was intoxicated or something, she might be in violation of the charter also. These are going to be some things that you're going to have to look at, you're going to address. And now we get to see, is she a buddy, or are you city commissioners and city mayors? Because that's the first duty that you have now, is protecting me and protecting the employees who stepped up. If I start to hear, or the people in the city start to hear, that any of the employees in all are getting harassed now, I don't think that's fair. I have faith in the city manager to stand tall and to protect the employees of the city of Madera Beach. If they were abused in any way, shape, or form, that's not, that's not anything that could be defended by this board. Now, everything has to come out, and everything has to be proven, I agree with that, because we've gone through innuendo before, where people's names were smeared with absolutely no proof at all, just so that people could get elected, and that was unfair. But right now, like I said, I don't, I don't care for what happens to the members of the board or anything, but my concern is that the city employees do not in any way, there is no retribution, there is nothing held against them for what they had to go through. If anything, there should be full support for them. Now, I have my faith, like I said, in the city manager. He's been through some things before, and I think he knows where he stands. And if he has to stand up against the board, he's going to have a lot of people in Madera Beach having his back. So just think about it now, put the city first. It's not about personalities, it's about the city of Madera Beach. You all talk about coming together, making things happen, that we heal the wounds and all. Well, this is going to be one of the times we see whether you're just blowing smoke, or you really do want to heal the wounds. Wherever the cards fall, that's where they fall. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Gay Prince from Marguerite Drive. I would like to question this latest ethics complaint, and go back to finding out where the real problem lies. A number of very serious ethics complaints have been filed against Shane Crawford, Pat Shontz, Cheryl McGrady Crawford, and Frank DeSantis, which are being actively investigated by the Florida Ethics Commission, FEMA, and the Pinellas County Construction Licensing Board. City Attorney Trask illegally withheld the ethics complaints from the public, the city lost a pub, and when I say city, I mean like whomever was sitting on the commission before, lost a public records case for withholding the ethics complaints in the Pinellas County Circuit Court. Judge Day ordered the city to release the ethics complaints in May of 2017. Why has the city not released the court ruling and posted the ruling and the ethics complaints on the city website? That might help a lot of people with what's going on now. The court case cost the city approximately $250,000 in legal fees. The legal fees were for Trask's public records violation, the illegal appointment of Huchové to the city commission, which is a violation of the Sunshine Act. Illegal appointment process was designed and executed by people before here. Gervais was removed from the city. Palladino Hodges and Lister were cited by Judge Day for violating the Sunshine Act. When will Judge Day's ruling and complaints be posted on the website? Please, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Evans, and Mayor Black, review Judge Day's ruling and advise the city to release the ethics complaints, put them on the website. As for everything that's going on right now, I'm here. I've seen things, cyberbullying on the websites, people saying "oo" because of Nancy. Well, I'm here to tell you I'm fat. Are people going to say "oo" to me? Should I try to lick somebody's face? Probably. But here's the thing, male muscle, female muscle, there's 72.6 pounds more male muscle mass in the male body, women only have 46.2, men have 40% more muscle mass in the upper body. Can you really tell me that all those men, and everybody has a personal boundary space, when you see someone coming into your boundary, they could just put up their hand and keep that person at bay? Mr. Crawford?
Anybody else? Public comment is now closed. Do we now have approval of the agenda? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges.
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein.
Yes.
Mayor Black.
Yes. Next, we have a proclamation, the National Safe Voting Week, May 19th through the 25th. City clerk?
National Safe Voting Week proclamation. For nearly 90 million Americans, voting continues to be a popular recreational activity. From coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together, boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Voting Week, we want to bring special attention to this pastime and remind recreational boaters of a few tips to ensure that they and their loved ones are safe and responsible while exploring our nation's waterways. Proper planning for a day of boating begins even before leaving the home. Getting a free vessel safety check and taking a safe boating course at the beginning of the boating season, filling a float plan with a trusted family member or friend, and checking the weather before boating are key steps to an enjoyable time boating. Every boater should wear a U.S. Coast Guard-approved life jacket at all times while boating. Drowning remains the number-one cause of death for recreational boaters each year, and the majority of drowning victims in recreational boating accidents are not wearing a life jacket. Safe and responsible boating includes never operating a boat while under the influence of drugs or alcohol and knowing basic navigation rules. National Safe Voting Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water. Whereas on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., approximately three-fourths of these are fatalities caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by boat, equipment, or environmental factors, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Eight out of every 10 victims in boating-related accidents were not wearing a life jacket. And whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past, thousands of people would be alive today had they taken the simple precaution of wearing a life jacket when they went out on the water. Whereas in an effort to combat, combat these statistics, the National Safe Boating Council, NSBC, is partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and the National Association of State Voting Law Administrators, NASBLA, with launch an annual North American Safe Boating Campaign during National Safe Voting Week. The campaign is designed to reach more than 70 million voters around North America and communicates this life, year's lifesaving message, "Boat smart, boat safe, wear it." Therefore, I, Maggie Black, do hereby support the goals of the North American Safe Boating Campaign, "Wear It," and proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2018, as National Safe Boating Week, and start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, and witness thereof, I urge all those who vote to wear it and practice safe boating habits, proclaim the safe day of May 2018.
Thank you. I think we need a round of applause for the city clerk who managed to get through that. I could not have read that. If you will, I'd like to share a couple of comments with you. Our flotilla would like to thank the mayor, the city commissioners, and the citizens of Madera Beach for their continuing support and recognition, Voting Safety Week. Madera Beach, Lower Sand Key, as this area was once called, has a long history with the Coast Guard. The Coast Guard first came to Madera Beach area in 1850s, when Sherwood Edwards was Egmont Key lighthouse keeper, and his family lived here. Other Coast Guard activities, strong Coast Guard activities, took place here during the Spanish-American War. We have one member in our flotilla who remembers as a child when the Coast Guard kept horses and dogs on the lot where we are, at 299 Bogus Eagle Drive, that did beach patrols for anti-submarine patrols. John's Pass Marina, obviously, has been a fishing village since the Great Gale of 1948, 1848, excuse me, which created the pass. Coast Guard has been protecting the seamen and enforcing maritime law here ever since. The Holiday Isle Training and Rescue Group was created in 1951 because of a number of local citizens involved in the fishing industry. This group and the city of Madera Beach raised some money to build our current auxiliary building. The incorporated area of Madera Beach is 62% water. Our flotilla was established in 1954 to promote boating safety through public education, vessel examinations, and safety patrols. The city of Madera Beach has continued to provide hand-in-hand support to the flotilla since that time. Our flotilla participates in all of the events that the city puts on, whether it's King of the Beach, or, I mean, we did over 500 hours last year in community outreach with your events. The flotilla has received many awards, including three national defense ribbons, presidential recognitions, multiple outstanding unit awards, and 9/11 ribbon. Our flotilla over the years has supported three different Cuban refugee relief and rescue operations, security patrols, Sunshine Skyway's crash, 9/11 support, hundreds of SAR cases, rescue cases out here on intercoastal and out in the Gulf, and thousands of hours of boating safety education support. We also have monitored many oil spills and still do a lot of red tide monitoring. In 2017, our flotilla gave back to the community of Madera Beach over 7,200 volunteer hours. These activities included 1,179 pleasure craft vessel checks, dozens of public education classes for new voters, environmental awareness classes for over 300 school-age students, boating safety and environmental classes for youth camps, over 100 marine dealer visits, several rescues, including one where there were 40 people onboard, and as late as yesterday, we were out here doing a survey of the aids to navigation in intercoastal and some of these marina areas, where we wrote up 14 discrepancies to send to the Coast Guard to have the signage correct out here for our boating public. Over 50,000 registered pleasure boats, over 50,000 registered pleasure boats are in Pinellas County, and more boating activity takes place in John's Pass than in Clearwater and Tarpon combined. Our flotilla needs the city's continuing partnership to save lives through public education programs and safety patrols, and we thank you very much. As a side note, as you changed the streets and upgraded the neighborhood around our building, we were almost out of business for about a year. I want to thank Public Works Department for their due diligence and getting behind the contractor and getting our lot put back together and our driveway put back together. Thank you.
All right, next we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes an award for the bid for the electric repair contract and also for the bid for the landscaping services. Dave Mosciano, here he is.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I believe the RFP and RFQ are represented there in your packets, and the first one would be the...
This is the award of bid for electrical and repairs contract.
Your first one is for electrical repairs, and I will bring it up. This was a RFQ, and it was a request for qualifications. We had a board of staff members and also a member of the rec center staff, and we went through all of the RFQs. There was three companies that qualified, and they were Riley Electric, MCD, MLDN, and also USA Electric. In that, USA Electric is our first choice, with Riley Electric or MCD being second and Riley being third, based on their hourly rate and qualifications. They all met all the qualifications necessary, had all of the proper insurances, and were all qualified. Riley and USA Electric were both at the same hourly rate, which was $75 an hour, and those companies will be available to us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The reason we like to pick all three is in the order that I went through those, they will, if one can't make it, if for some reason something tragic was to happen, we have somebody to go back to. So that's a brief explanation of that. Do you all have any questions for me about the RFQ for the electrical?
I have one quick one, Dave.
Yes, sir.
So you'll, you'll call these contractors in order of their price?
In order of the qualifications, which was, which was USA Electric, which we felt was the most qualified vendor. We've done prior work with both, with USA Electric. They did the project down in John's Pass. We had great success with them, so they were our first choice based on price and their qualifications. He also has the master electrician that we required, all the groups do. MCD would be our second choice to come in because of their price, and then Riley Electric comes in at $100 an hour. Riley Electric is somebody that we would use for the ball field lights, another reason for approving them in the RFQ process. They do most of the lights that have to do with the ball field and stuff like that.
Okay, because when I read it, I just didn't really understand in what order or how we selected these people. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the, with the request for qualifications that staff has, this allows for the flexibility to select the appropriate contractor based on what the needs are, based solely on their qualifications. Now, they did delineate the price, and that's something that the Public Works Director will monitor, but he can definitely assemble a team or a group of individuals to tackle whatever the challenge is and issue is. whatever the challenge is and issue. So, it provides for a little bit more flexibility based on what the need is at the immediate time, as opposed to an RFP where you're going to select based on a proposal and you're going to go with the lowest and most responsive bidder. RFQ provides you more flexibility, and at least he knows the billable rate for those individuals depending on the firm that he does select.
Moving forward.
I have a question. Please. Me.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
With regards to USA Voltage?
Yes.
I know that they've done projects for us before, and I just want to confirm, I guess, number one, that all projects that have been, all projects that they have been working on for us, have they been totally completed? Is there, are they signed off on everything? Is anything going to be carried over if they are awarded the bid? Follow me.
No, I do not.
Okay. Do they have any outstanding issues, or do we have any outstanding issues with any of the work that they have done?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Yes. I think you were there when we did the work in John's Pass, and that was done with very little impact, I'd like to think. And they've also done several other projects for us that have been extremely successful. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I just wanted to make sure, I know that you'll, I'm sure you'll do it, but I didn't see it in the initial bid approval, which I know that this is and will be getting more paperwork after this, but I just wanted to make sure. I noticed in our request to all the companies, we asked for all of the license numbers for all of the electricians, and I noticed that on USA Voltage, there's three of, I think three, and we didn't get their license numbers, and I know that you'll get them right before we execute the...
Sure. USA does have all of those, and we'll make sure that you have those documents too. Yes, ma'am.
Because there's four of those people. And then also, oh, yeah, it said that we require, the city of Madeira Beach requires certificates of insurance, and the vendor, USA Voltage, said that they'd be happy to obviously get them to us at the time of execution of the service contract?
We already have theirs, but...
We do? Okay. I just want, I just thought it's important to get the deck page with the effective date...
We already have theirs, but we will be getting with the other companies once we've gone through this process to make sure that all of the proper protocol is followed.
Okay. That's just, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Madam Mayor, what we're doing with this item is we're requesting authorization to effectively award the RFQ and rank them in the order based on their qualifications, but we would have to come back to the board with a contract to effectively memorialize the agreement. So, it will come back to the board, and we will make sure that that document that was discussed by the vice mayor is included in the overall packet.
Moving on to the RFP that was released for the landscaping services. Behind you on the screen is a map of the city that shows where those areas are that they, that they're going to be mowing for us. That company is Floridian Development. They were the low bidder. They are the current contractor. They also came in at $10,000 less. They were $67,000 the last, the last year of our contract. With the release of the RFP, that number went down $10,000. So, with that, they were awarded the RFP, the request for proposals, and we were, staff's recommendation is for approval, so we can move forward.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, it's staff's assumption that because that this was a competitive bid process, that you did see the price decrease because of the contractor, in essence, having to sharpen their pencil and come with a more competitive rate because there was other entities that were involved in the solicitation process. So, that's something, as, you know, the city moving forward, when we look at these particular arrangements, you know, yes, it provides for a little additional work for staff to go through that type of process, but there also can be some substantial savings to the organization should we decide to go through the RFP or RFQ process and get the better favorable rate for us moving forward.
And we will hold their feet to the fire, Commissioner Weinstein, I promise.
Because I do have a couple of questions on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody? Yeah, okay. Yes, I just looked at the background information that you provided us with, and I know that you will, I'm sure that you will, but I was a little bit confused, I guess, Dave. Number one, you discuss the, covers the, you know, the different areas that are shown on the map there, and I'm looking at them on the little map that I have, and I'm having a little bit of difficulty, I guess. The Madeira Way Triangle, is that that little piece, that little strip of land between the library, the firehouse, and the city hall? Is that what that Madeira Way Triangle is?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, you put a big star by that one, okay? Because that hadn't been touched in years, I think. And the 130th Avenue parking lot, is that the parking lot on Gulf Boulevard West between Madeira and Norte and Surfside? Do you know?
Yes, ma'am. I do realize where the 130th Avenue parking lot is.
Okay. But I'm just asking, is that, did I identify it right?
Yes.
Okay. So, but I didn't know what they would do there, because they don't do anything there.
There is some stuff that they do there with the trimming of the sea grapes. They have to keep the sea grapes off of the fence. We're in the process of doing work at the 130th Avenue parking lot, which is between Madeira and Norte, as you said, and we did meet with those folks. The sea grapes on either side are getting cleaned up, but yes, there are, you know, when you say, when you see that it's not just mowing, it's trimming of trees under a certain level, et cetera, et cetera. So, that particular area right there, that's what they do.
Okay. I didn't really even notice that there were any trees there, but I could be, I'll look again.
There's sea grapes, ma'am.
Right. Okay. And then the other area, well, there's a couple of other areas, the pocket parks in Bogasiega.
Yes.
Are there like still three or four of them in Bogasiega neighborhood? Is that where they...
There's more than that. Yes, ma'am. But yes, there is pocket parks in Bogasiega Park. I think they're all listed there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Okay. And who's supposed to do Kitty Stewart?
Kitty Stewart Park? Part of the, is maintained by them, but we also maintain the shower area.
Okay. Because that, I'm sure you've gone by there, and it's just...
I'm in the city every day.
I walk there every day, okay? And I see it, and I'm sure that we'll do something about it, but I just wanted to identify it because I see it every day. But, and the other one is, the last one, okay, is the Gulf Boulevard between 130th and 131st, where that bus stop is in front of the Bamboo Beer Garden?
Yes, ma'am.
That, it's just been ages since, I mean, and when I say ages, it's not clean, I mean, it's not fresh dirt, you know, and it's not fresh litter. And I just would hope that, I guess, when you bring back the, I guess, the contract for floriculture, because I'm sure they do mostly a really good job, but those areas are really defined, and it's, and we're told like how often they're supposed to do them or when they're going to get to them, or would you do that? Would you be able to assist schedule?
We'll be sure to get with our park supervisor, Debbie Laramie, and floriculture, and we'll address these items that you brought up today.
Schedule. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any more questions I could answer for the commission at this time?
No.
Staff's recommendation would be for an approval. It is a $10,000 decrease, and despite Commissioner Weinstein's issues, we'll get with that company and hold their feet to the fire.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
More questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. My pleasure. Thank you.
My pleasure. Can I have a motion to approve?
Not on your consent agenda. Madam Mayor, as you, since you've discussed them on, you've kind of taken up the items effectively by discussing them individually, you've effectively taken them off of consent. So, what our recommendation would be to effectively take action on them individually as part of the actions that the board would take. So, for instance, the first one would be the approval of the electrical, and then the next one would be the approval of the landscape contract.
I'm not sure why you...
So, we're looking for two separate motions, because it's not fair to put the electrical in with the landscaping. We want to do first vote on one and then vote on the other. And consent agenda is really, you're not supposed to discuss it. So, if you want to discuss something on a consent agenda, technically, you should pull it from the consent agenda and put it on the regular agenda. That's kind of a separate issue, but if we can go ahead and just vote on them with two separate motions...
That's fine. That's fine. I'd like to talk to you about that later, though. All right. So, then we will first go with the award for the bid of the electrical and...
Madam Mayor, since we're doing it separately, did we do public comment then on that?
We could take public comment on all items if you can before we do a final vote.
Yes, absolutely. But the first item is the electric repair contract, so now we will open that for public comment.
I'm Gay Prince, Marguerite Drive. I don't know who did the electric for the city hall project. Might not be, for two reasons, a good idea to have them do it, since whenever there's a big storm, there's no power at city hall and people have to go to the public library for help. And secondly, spread the love. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, then...
Then I'll make a motion.
Shall we make a motion?
I'll make a motion to award a bid for the electric repair contract.
Second. Any more discussion from the board? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. Next, we have the award for the bid for landscaping. Public comment is now open for that item now.
Steve Kochuk, 15301, Second Street East, Madeira Beach. Been doing consent agenda for I don't know how many years. This is what's called micromanaging. If you've got issues to do and all, you nitpick every little thing. These people are professionals here. I go to a lot of these places you're talking about. I don't know what you're talking about. It's in such bad shape. It's this, it's that all the time. If you have something to do, get ahold of the city manager before the meeting, during the week, you see it on the agenda, talk with him about it, be professional. Because if you think you're impressing anybody up here, it's micromanaging, and it looks to the people like you don't even know what you're talking about half the time. And it's a shame, and I don't blame you. You think you're doing the right thing, but these are the professionals. That's why we pay them the money. They're hired. Talk to them in private. Don't bring it out here in front of it where the guy has to answer your questions that, you know, everybody walks by these areas and they see it and all, and I think the city looks very well, really good, you know? And I think they do professional jobs and they try their best. Once again, it's to make the employees look bad. Do it in private. It's a consent agenda. It was supposed to be just brought up, everything agreed, and you go on. Before the meeting starts, you talk to the city attorney or talk to Dave, through the city attorney. That's all. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you. 14045, but please don't stalk me. I'd like to thank Ms. Weinstein for bringing up some questions. I don't see what's wrong with it, and as somebody who would get their lawn cut, I'd like somebody to tell me if something was wrong with it and go from there. And if you're a professional, you take it and you make your job better. And thank you very much, Ms. Weinstein.
Anyone else? Public comment is now closed on this item. Any more comment from the commission?
No, but I'll make the motion to award the bid for the landscaping services to USA Voltage.
Oh, second.
Wait a minute.
Pardon?
What are you doing?
I'm sorry. I was looking right at it to floriculture. Sorry. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
No second.
May I have the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2018-03, amending the fees and collection manuals, collection procedures manual. First reading, Linda Portell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, and I know we've been through this many, many times. One point I would like to draw your attention to is the misspelling of Kitty Stewart Park in the area. We added that in. That's a Scrivener's error. Just want to note that that will need to be changed. Otherwise, I have no recommended changes. We have taken all of your input from the previous meetings and have been added everything that you requested, and it should be a final document. I know we've had many, many hearings and discussions on this in the past. If you have any questions, the staff is here to answer as they relate to specific areas.
Madam Mayor, if I may, one of the items that has been added to the fee ordinance since our last discussion is on page 24, and it is item number 17, and it delineates the fuel discounts for those individuals that have commercial accounts, that have, that purchase gas from the city, 50 gallons or more, and other agencies as well, US Boats and US Toes. And so, we wanted to communicate if there was any effective discounts or benefits to have that memorialized in the fee ordinance, similar to that that we did with the summer camp, making sure that resident, non-resident rate having that there. So, in our conversations and in my discussions with one of the board members, they had asked a question concerning that, and so we thought that it was only appropriate that we put that into the fee ordinance, and those entities that fall specifically under those categories will be, if the board would like to keep that section in there, would be available, will be able to receive that particular benefit. So, I just wanted to communicate that, that it is in the fee ordinance, and we've made the changes as recommended by the board since our last conversation. The staff stands prepared to answer any questions you may have.
I personally think that's fine, having that in there, and I have no other questions.
I don't either, and we are ready, I mean, I'm certainly ready to vote on it, I'm ready to make a motion, because we need to start enforcing ordinance 2018-03 as amended. So, is there any more conversation? Well, oh, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make the motion then to...
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? Public comment is now closed. We can proceed with the motion.
Okay. I would like to make the motion to approve ordinance 2018-03 on first reading.
Okay. We got to read the...
I second it.
She's got to read it.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, city clerk.
Ordinance 2018-03, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fees and collection procedures, whereas the city commission finds it appropriate to regularly review and amend the amount and type of fees collected in order to reflect the cost of service and facility provision citywide.
Okay. All right. Now, I'll make the motion. Okay, I'll make the motion then to move to approve ordinance 2018-03 on the first reading.
And I'll second that.
Any more discussion? City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 2018-04, amendment to non-conforming structures. First reading, Director Portell.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I apologize. I have all my presentation ready for you, but as I came in here, my computer lost it.
First reading, Director Portell.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I apologize. I have all my presentation ready for you, but as I came in here, my computer lost it. So, I would like to ask if we can please move on to another item and come back to this. I'll go back and load it up on the other machine and bring it back when I find it.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Going forward, we have resolution 2018-02, adoption of Board Commissioners' Policy and Procedures Manual. City Manager?
Madam Clerk, if you want to read the orders or the resolution title into the record before I start my presentation?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, requesting repeal of HB 631 and effective dry sand beaches in Florida.
That's the, we're doing the ordinance 2018-02, the Policies and Procedures Manual.
Resolution 2018-02, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners' Policy Handbook and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Board, the item before you is resolution 20802, adopting a Policies and Procedures Manual for the Board of City Commissioners. This is stipulated in the charter that authorizes the Board to determine and establish rules of procedures that will effectively govern the relationship between the Board themselves as well as staff. Previous conversations, staff has went through and made the modifications as discussed with the Board, as well as looked at language that's consistent with state statute and provided some additional clarifications. Staff also added some additional components in here to allow for the city manager to be able to call for a special meeting in the event that there is something that is pressing in nature and we would need to assemble the Board for whatever that reason may be. We did make some additional modifications to provide some clarification and some cleanup language, some things related to public records and public meetings and public notices. The city attorney, the city clerk, and myself had had an opportunity to review the documents and provide the necessary changes and modifications. And we believe that this document encapsulates all the items that were discussed with the Board at previous sessions. One section that we did add to the agenda is staff reports as far as how the agenda process is handled. Staff reports will allow for any presentations from staff or our contract providers on a status update on what's going on. So, for instance, if there is the desire of the Board to say, "We'd like for law enforcement to give us a staff report," we will add it on to the agenda. So, that's something that in your agenda-setting meetings, maybe you don't want to have an item go before or come before you at a workshop, but you just want a Cliff Notes version, something that's five or 10 minutes. We can add it to the staff report and they will communicate that at a regular board meeting. It also allows for us flexibility that if anything does happen in Tallahassee, that we can add something to the staff report and provide real-time updates. So, you may see situations whereby the agenda is published and there may be an opportunity that we get something at a last minute that we just want to let the Board know what's going on. There will be a verbal presentation from staff that will say, you know, "We've heard this," or "There's something happening at the county," and just provide the Board an opportunity to provide us perspective so we can effectively make sure that we carry out the policy edicts from the Board. So, we made that modification. We've also addressed some public communications desires that the Board wanted to see staff work on. And so, at this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions. And at this point, we are also recommending approval of resolution 2008-02.
I just have one comment on the, it's the very last page and it's under Agenda Preparation packets. And it's changing it to the packets will be done by, well, what it says is they will be ready for distribution by 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday or 3:00 p.m. on Thursday at the latest. I think it should be, the 3:00 p.m. on Wednesday should be taken out and just say 3:00 p.m. on Thursday. But I also question whether or not we can get it done by Thursday since currently the handbook says by Friday. So, City Clerk, can you address that? Do you think that's actually possible?
Yes, it's, to get it posted on the website and everything, it's almost impossible to wait till Friday to get it posted. We're trying to make a deadline of Wednesday to have it publicized. And if we have a holiday on a Monday or something like that, or something comes up, we have a workshop training, it gives us to that Thursday. And if it's more difficult items that require more research and all, it gives us to that Thursday. But we're trying to get it done by Thursday and have it publicized by 3:00 o'clock.
I just don't mind.
But the goal is Wednesday at 3:00, but I understand we can change that to Thursday at 3:00 if it's up to...
Madam Clerk, if, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just the communication piece of the agenda of what items are going to be on the agenda, not the actual packet that will be distributed on Wednesday.
It says the packet.
It says packet.
Yeah, so what we, realistically, what it should say is that the agenda or the items that will be on the agenda, we want to get that publicized. But the packet, we'd like to put on the packet that it's distributed and available for public consumption no later than Friday. Now, obviously, we have to get it done by Thursday to place it on the website, et cetera. But the items that are going to be placed on the agenda, that's something that we want to get completed by Wednesday at the latest. In addition to, with the new technology that the Clerk's office is working on, we will be able to, the same way that we've put out information about workshops for the next three months, we're going to begin to populate what agenda items will look like for the next three months as well. So, you'll have a good understanding of those items well in advance. But, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, it is to put out the items that we look to discuss with the Board at a regular meeting on Wednesday or Thursday, but with the packet coming out Thursday, if not Friday morning.
That's correct.
So, we can make that modification in that if the Board so likes for us to do so. And I would recommend that as well. It makes it a lot easier for us.
Well, and it's a lot clearer because it didn't address separately the agenda itself versus the packet.
Okay.
And I know a lot of times it's been difficult to get it even done by Friday because of last-minute changes and, you know, no disrespect, but it's just something that I just want to make sure we put a realistic date in there. So, if that gets suggested, I'm perfectly fine. Any more discussion from the commission? This item is now open for public comment. Public comment is now closed.
I make a motion. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-02, adoption of fiscal year 2018 through 19, Policy and Procedure Manual. It's a resolution, so it can be approved at the first reading. Is that right?
Yep.
I'll second that, but with the...
With modifications.
With the change. Instead of just packet, yeah, distribution, agenda distribution.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes.
Next, we have resolution 2018-04, Public Beach Access Municipal Home Rule.
Madam Clerk, if you can read the resolution title into the record before I commence my presentation?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2018-04, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, requesting repeal of House Bill 631 affecting dry sand beaches in Florida.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Board of City Commissioners, this item before you is resolution 2018-04, Public Access Beaches and Municipal Home Rule. In the state constitution, state constitution was amended in 1968 and then later adopted by the voters in 1973, giving municipalities home rule authority. This particular piece of legislation, as adopted by the legislature, preempts local government's ability to govern how access of the beaches are handled. The particular legislation that passed places the burden on the government entity to effectively fight for the customary public use of beach property or the land, the dry sand. The legislation allows for, which will take effect July 1, allows for, private property owners to effectively restrict access to beachgoers and affect recreational amenities that are on the sandy beach. What it did was take an existing piece of legislation and put the onus and the responsibility on local governments versus the private property owner. Prior to this piece of legislation, the private property owner would have to provide the information that effectively that this property wasn't being utilized by the public and it is, in essence, their private property to do with it as they may. The legislation switched and now puts the onus and the responsibility on local governments to petition a judge to communicate or to discuss that this is customary public use. This is another concern for us because it preempts your home rule authority that now you cannot pass any ordinance that further defines or delineates the response or the beach access. And the other side, it infringes on your home rule authority to govern your community in the way in which you think is appropriate. Another concern that we do have is we have protected species that nest on our beaches. And those protections are in perpetuity in our federal law, but then you have a situation where they're on private property and it provides for some confusion. And that's one thing that this piece of legislation has effectively done, provided for confusion. There is a lot of discussions in Tallahassee about the possibility of repealing this piece of legislation. And this one-size-fits-all legislative approach is not something that's conducive to our community or other communities throughout the state of Florida. With over 1,193 coastal miles in the state of Florida and 663 beaches in our communities, we believe that this legislation further encroaches on our home rule authority. This piece of legislation, if approved by the Board of this resolution, will be asking the folks in Tallahassee to please reconsider their actions that they have taken. On Madeira Beach specifically, we realistically have three access points where we can have vehicles on the beaches to be able to traverse the beaches to pick up trash. If those access points are closed down, which some of us, some of those access points we have been utilizing for a while, if that effectively is taken away from us, we only have certain areas where we can be able to enter the beach to be able to provide service, to pick up trash, and even provide life safety services. So, we are certainly hoping that the state legislature really considers this piece of, reconsider's this piece of legislation as we don't want it to jeopardize the tourism economy that we experience here. We don't want to have the state preempt local governments from deciding what they think is most appropriate. And then this is another unfunded mandate. In the event that we have to challenge it, the first dollar, obviously, is from the city. So, working with the city attorney, we've put forth a resolution that is the position of the Board respectfully requesting those members of the state legislature to reconsider their position and allow for us to operate in a way that we think is most appropriate for our residents here in Madeira Beach. So, at this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions and recommends approval of resolution 2018-04.
Any discussion from...
I was curious, did we, when we were at the, at that Big C meeting, I remember you brought this up, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, you read it, yeah. Did the other communities at that time, other beach communities, the Reddington and Treasure Island, did they make any comments as to whether they were doing this all so?
We had copies for them and a lot of them picked them up, so they would be doing the same thing.
Oh, good. Okay, so it'll be a uniform.
Yes.
Everybody will do it.
I'm sure they will all eventually do the same thing.
Right. We'll be the leader, okay?
Any more comments? Any, public is now open for discussion? Public comment is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to go ahead and pass resolution 2018-04. Excuse me.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes.
Commissioners, I'll be speaking at the Local Government Law Section to the lawyers for cities and counties on Thursday in Orlando. And now that you've passed this, I'll get a signed copy and I'll try to bring it up in my talk and display it and have copies available for all the city attorneys that are there at that meeting.
I've got one quick question. If you're going to be doing that, does this also include, like, if it's a lake and they have beachfront front of their property on the lake, it works the same way? I mean, because then it would affect even more cities than just up and down each coast.
I'll have to check into whether customary use doctrine applies to lakes. I know it applies to beaches, but I'm not sure about lakes. The case that started the whole thing is Tony Ramo versus Daytona Beach. So, it originates out of a Supreme Court case about the beach, but I'll look into the lakes.
Thank you.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
We already did it.
We already did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next, we have resolution, this is the last resolution, everybody? 2018-05, Parking Revenue, Revenues Allocation of Additional 50 Cents. City Manager?
Madam Clerk, if you can read the resolution title into the record before I proceed?
Thank you.
Resolution 2018-05, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, establishing the percentage allocation for the additional revenues associated with 2018 parking fee increase as proposed in ordinance 2018-03 and providing for an effective date.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Board, pursuant to the conversations that were held with staff concerning the proposed increase associated with parking, staff has brought forward a resolution for the Board to consider an allocation as to how they would like the funds to be expended. One of the things that we did as part of this agenda item is to look at the financial condition of the organization and look specifically at our, what our credit rating is by Moody's. And currently, we have an investment grade of A2, which is a very high grade. It's the third highest credit rating that you can receive through Moody's. We also took an opportunity to look at the debt throughout the city. And based on the information that has been provided to me by our financial advisors and looking at our fund balance and the financial data that will be communicated later on this evening, the city is in a strong fiscal position. One of the things that we have talked about in our discussions is about the opportunity to utilize today's monies to make capital investment and address today's concerns. With the conversation that was had with the Board, there was discussions about the possibility of utilizing a portion of the monies to effectively pay debt service payment. In my conversation with the Finance Director and the Financial Advisor, we talked about the opportunity to utilize some of the monies we have on hand to look to pay off some of the debt that we do have. And obviously, when you go through a bond issuance and a rating, when you do pay those debts down before the call date or before the final maturity date, there is some penalties. And some penalties will result in the city losing its credit rating and have a adverse impact if we try to go out to the bond market again. What staff's principal concern is and focus is, is to utilize a portion of this money to address some of the capital infrastructure needs. When we get into the budget process, you will see that there's a lot of things, not just cosmetically, but infrastructure-wise, that we need to address here and now. My concern is if we put off some of the capital investments that we need to make or some of the operational investments that we need to make, it will inevitably lead us to looking at a future bond issuance. We have parking lots that are in desperate need of repair. We have situations where there is some exposed rebar in some of the parking stops and some of the landscapes...
of the landscape maintenance. We need to be a little bit more proactive on that, but obviously that it takes financial means to do that. Secondly, I've had the opportunity many times to walk the village and look at some things cosmetically that we need to do as a city to spruce up and protect that investment that we do have at John's Pass because it is such a huge economic engine for the city and we want to make sure that the visitor's experience and time in John's Pass is something that is pleasant. So we have provided a series of categories that the Board can effectively look to allocate the monies, how the Board deems fit. Staff did not provide any recommendation as to what percentage should go in those categories, but what we plan to do is once the Board provides that information, then the Finance Director and I will make sure that those monies are allocated in a different account that's restricted in a way that addresses what the intent of the Board's desires are associated with this item. So, to wrap up everything, for us, we really do believe that there is some value to putting some monies aside for the purposes of curing some of the long-term debt issues we have, but also the immediate needs that we have as an agency to make sure we make that capital investment today. Because I would venture to say that the borrowing that we had to get ourselves in as a city was necessitated by us not taking care of some of those things proactively. And so we came to a point where there was a lot of things that were happening all at once and that's when you get into a big bond issuance and have the debt that you have to deal with. But all in all, the debt that you have is a good debt because you have a tangible asset and we are going to constantly look at ways to effectively reduce the debt, to operate more efficiency and look at ways to reinvest in portions of our community that are major economic engines for us. It is great for us to make some strategic investments in improving some of the lighting at the Pass, looking at some of our parking lots, looking to acquire parcels when available if they're adjacent to John's Pass to be able to accommodate parking. That's been something that's been shared with me numerous times. And then some improved lighting. We need some lighting in certain areas because there is some public safety concerns that has been communicated to me and that I've seen firsthand. So, at this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions. For those that are watching at home and those that are in the audience, the categories that staff has put together are infrastructure slash community aesthetics, cosmetics, debt service payment, operational needs, grants, and perpetual care fund, John's Pass Village, and other. And of course, this is out of 100% or $1, however you decide to divvy that up. And then, once the Board finds consensus on where they would like to effectively park some of that money, for lack of better terms, then I will just recap it for the record and then we can move forward with the adoption of the resolution. Now, this resolution takes the 50 cents that the Board just agreed upon at the first reading of the ordinance, for the fee ordinance, but again, it has to come back, the fee ordinance for second and final reading. Once second and final reading occurs, that's when the allocation and the monies will be monitored and then we can provide you real-time updates as to how those accounts are doing once those fees take effect. So at this time, staff stands prepared to answer any questions or provide any additional insight and staff recommends approval of whatever the Board's pleasure is with respect to the distribution of funds.
Well, my recommendation would be definitely 50% for the debt service because that was the initial 25 cents out of the 50 that we had originally, originally agreed upon. When we decided to go the extra 25 cents to go 50 cents, I think that extra 50% probably would be best spent on infrastructure, community aesthetics, and cosmetics, which would assume would include capital items, maybe a generator or, I mean, a lot of things we need.
My recommendation was 50% or 25 cents for the debt service, 20% or 10 cents for the infrastructure, and 30% or 15 cents for the operational needs.
Okay, well, my distribution was 35 cents or 70% for the debt service payments and 15 cents or 30% for the infrastructure, community aesthetics, and cosmetics.
Let's see, I'd like to go 30% on infrastructure, 15% on the debt services, John's Pass Village, 25%. I don't know where I came up with this, 15, 15% for the grants.
We're all over the board.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So we'll tackle the debt service issue because that takes a good portion of the percent where the Board wants to go. So where do we, where do we find ourselves? We've got 50%, 50%, I believe 75%, and then 15%.
I think it was 70%.
No, 70%.
70%, I'm sorry, 70.
Well, I feel strongly about those two same categories that the Mayor and Commissioner Dowter are appealing to, the debt service payments and the infrastructure. I would bend a little bit, if y'all would, I would, I mean, if you consider it, if you want to consider it, to make the debt service payment, you're going a quarter out of the 50 cents, right?
Right, great.
I mean, it's kind of foolish to, you know, nitpick the nickel, but I do feel strongly about it. I feel strongly that it needs to be the debt service payment, but I think the nickel is, I'd go to the 30 cents and the 20 to the infrastructure, community aesthetics. Would you consider that?
So you're okay with 50 for the debt service?
Um, yeah, I'll go with the, um...
Okay.
Well, with the 50, no, the 50%, I mean, the 50 cents, 50% is the quarter, right. And I did think long and hard on that, too. But, you know, I know, I understand the concerns for the infrastructure and the community and I understand how important it is because I've read and reread your memos and looking around, I see what needs to be done. And I do feel strongly that the infrastructure and the community aesthetics needs, needs the funding, too. So I'll change. I'll go down to the quarter for the 50%, okay?
And that is what we were sold on when we first agreed.
Exactly, well, right. I was part of the audience and I definitely thought, you know, that, oh, gosh, this is a wonderful windfall and this, all this 50 cents, you know, should go toward the debt service. But looking at the overall picture and all the different issues, I know that there's more things to it than just the debt service.
Good. So it seems to be that there's consensus for 25 cents or 50% to go towards the debt service?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and so that leaves us with the other 25 cents or 50% to be discussed on, seems that there's some desires for the infrastructure, community aesthetics, cosmetics.
And I would agree with that. Is that what your thoughts were? I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
I would agree with that. I just think that the operational needs in John's Pass Village need to be part of the regular structure, our nucleus, not the extra 50 cent windfall, right?
I agree with you.
Well, and the thing about this being a resolution is obviously, as things change, as you pay off more of your debt and those types of things, by virtue of resolution, you can change your percentage distribution next year or those types of things. So you do have that flexibility, but for, you know, I wanted to make sure that this accomplished what the Board's desires were and we can make sure that we're putting aside the monies to address the debt concern. Now, just on a rough estimate, if our projections come in as anticipated, you're going to be able to put roughly about $200,000 a year aside for debt service payment, which is good because once those call dates come, you can play, you can pay for that with cash on hand. And that can be something that you could also utilize as a, as an opportunity in the event that you ever wanted to borrow money, once you pay that off, you utilize, you pledge that funding stream to pay the debt, you know, as opposed to available, you know, property tax revenue and other things. So, infrastructure, it seems like we're, you know, there's definitely a desire and I think we go from 30% to 20% or 15%. So I just kind of wanted to see where the, where the Board wanted to end up on that one.
Okay, well, I was the one at the 15, so I've gone up.
Okay, oh, yeah, you made concession, yeah.
I negotiated.
Yeah.
So we're saying that we want to do it 50-50, with the other 50 cents or 25, 50% or 25 cents for the infrastructure, et cetera?
I think that's, that's the way I'd like to see it go and I appreciate the City Manager putting it, marking it down that way, comparing the, it's an easy way to look at it, you know, I mean.
I mean, because we have those needs, it's not like we're going to be purposely, you know, buying things.
And also, we can exchange it, too.
Correct.
At a later date.
Right.
That'd be fine.
All right, so we have a consensus?
So there's consensus for the Board for the other 25 cents or 50% to go to infrastructure and, and community aesthetics and cosmetics?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so just for the record and have it reflected in the actual resolution itself, that the Board of City Commissioners has decided to put 50 cents or 50% of the monies that is collected over and above the $2 that the city levies for parking to go towards debt service and the other 50 cents to go towards infrastructure, community aesthetics, and cosmetic improvements?
50%.
50% or 25 cents, yeah, yeah. What did I say, 15 cents?
I said, oops, wait, did we really get a dollar?
Okay, it sounded great. Are the floors now open for public comment on this item? Yes, sir.
My name is Matthew Powers. I'm one of the owners of Mad Beach Craft Brewing Company, The Florida Winery, and Island Rags at John's Pass Village. My family, we've had businesses in John's Pass for 25 years now. We've owned our property for about 11 years. I also sit on the Board of the Village Association. Recently in April, we hosted the new City Manager, John Evans, for a meet and greet. At this meet and greet, we hosted a, you know, question and answers with Mr. Evans and overwhelmingly, the most common issue was about parking and the meters. So needless to say, this is a pretty, you know, important issue to all the merchants at John's Pass. Now, after sitting here, contrary to the belief of many of you on the Commission, the business of John's Pass, we're not heartless entities. You know, we're mom and pop shops with, you know, the exception of two or three national chains. You know, my father and I, you know, he's the one that started it. I've been lucky enough to come in and take over his, you know, what he's done and take it to levels, you know, that we're very proud of. We work hard for this. And honestly, it's hard to sit here and not, you know, Nancy, thanks, you did bring up and for a second fought for us, to say that you should earmark some of this for us, which should have been done from the beginning, back when these meters were put in. But to sit here and listen to you guys, you know, earmark to pay down your debt, that's great, that's bad. As a business, we have very little debt ourselves. We pay with things as we go, which helps us take care of our, you know, about 50 employees. When the hurricane came in and we were closed for a week and a half, almost, we paid all our employees ourselves. And the other half to improving the city, and I love Madeira Beach. I don't live in Madeira Beach, I live in Largo, but I spend more time here, whether it be at work or out on the beach or in the waters. I love Madeira Beach so much. So I'm a little remiss at the moment, you know, inviting my tongue to sit here and you guys can't sit here and, you know, you've already made up your mind, you've got this money, your kid's on Christmas, you got your presents under the tree, you know, it feels good, you know, but you don't want to share it with the people that, we work so hard for this. We really do. And if you guys don't even give us a thought to give back to us, you know, this money, you know, you could earmark some of this for us, which should have been done from the beginning for things like the seafood festival, which again, is volunteer only. I, myself, as a business, probably put in about $30,000 from donations from product to the amount I pay my company controller to run the association. Yet the city, we have to fight for you guys to let us use a parking lot, which is something that should be free anyways. It's something that's been around longer than, than, you know, the meters. And the point of that is to market your guys' vending machines there at John's Pass and help you guys out. And we're all about helping you guys out. I love Madeira Beach. Without you guys, we're nothing, but without us, that's a pretty big dent, you know. If you guys raise these, you know, meters and John's Pass goes down, you know, that's a pretty big loss to the city. And I hope you guys think about that as you go through with this. Because it's, you know, I sit here and I listen to the merchants, you know, some of them are too afraid to come up here and talk to city leaders. And I can understand that. I hate public speaking. I'm a little nervous now. Others feel that, you know, you guys aren't going to listen, it's going to fall on deaf ears because of, like I said, you don't see that businesses are people. We're humans, we have employees, I have about 50 employees and they depend on their paychecks. And this will definitely hurt us if there's no other help for us. Other than that, I hope you guys, you know, can dig down deep because it's, you know, it's a pretty deep issue for us and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Jason Dela Cruz, owner of Don's Dock Wild Seafood in the Pass, and I kind of want to echo Matt's sentiments. I was in that meeting, too, and I did have that discussion. And I think the, one of the things that may escape occasionally is the fact that if I understand how that works right, that the revenues that are driven from the parking in the Pass are so great that it actually helps keep the tax rate down in the city. And I would think that we can think about that enough and we'd say, look, let's try to invest some of the money back into the thing, it's like, kind of like killing the cash cow for a leather bear, Kurt. We make the money because we draw the people in and yes, we have businesses that benefit from that, but the city itself benefits from that. So hopefully, you guys think about that and maybe there's just a little place we can make some specific adjustments. I mean, I got pickets over the top of the boardwalk, over the top of my place that are missing, that we need maintenance up there. We have, we've had issues that we need to be dealt with. So hopefully, you can just think of that and think about it from the standpoint of it helps everybody in the community because it keeps our tax rates down. Thank you.
Helen Carter, 5000 Miramar Drive, Madeira Beach. I think that if you're going to raise the parking to park in the places with the unsafe parking lights and the bad roads, I think maybe you should put some of the money back in there. Just saying.
Hello, Cassandra Drew Tudaro, I live at 175 Medallion here in Madeira Beach.
Can you talk on the microphone, please?
Can you? Okay, sure. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure on the dollar amounts. Mr. Evans, you said 200,000 would go to debt relief?
The, it's anticipated, our projection is it would be about $413,000 of additional revenue. So if we split it right down, it would be 200, you know, $6,000, $207,000 per quarter that it would generate. So $200,000 plus would go to debt, debt payments.
Okay, so that's a quarter. So you're talking 800,000 a year and 800,000?
No, it would be, for, in totality, for the entire year, the additional 50 cents would generate 413,000.
Okay, okay. And so the other 200,000 approximately after you buy down the debt, how are you going to allocate that, some of your projects? What are you going to do if, if your aesthetic repair at the parking lots or at John's Pass? You're talking a lot of money when you start saying you're going to do a cosmetic thing here and a cosmetic thing there and an improvement there and an improvement there. If you're going to run into cost overruns, are we going to borrow more money on that? Or how are you going to prioritize exactly where you're appropriating that 200,000? Do you follow what I'm saying? 200,000 in the scope of Madeira Beach doesn't cover a lot.
I am Tom Powers, 12945 Village Boulevard. And, you know, this is the first time I've been in this building. I don't come down here very often. You know, we stay down here, we run our business and we do what we're supposed to do. I'm kind of, I feel like I'm the old guy on the block, been around long enough to know... what's went on in the past and commission meetings and so forth. Before my time, the state used to own that road right down through the middle of John's Pass, it's 100 foot wide right away. Well, when the state moved the road over to where it is now, where it goes across the bridge, they abandoned that and the city got free piece of property. At that time, all the merchants had parking down there, the state didn't, the state didn't charge us the parking, they didn't have parking meters, the city didn't have parking meters, well, you know, our customers come and went, uh, we weren't quite as big then, we weren't quite as popular then. As years went on, the city decided that they needed to dress things up, they got a grant, the city didn't pay for it, they got a grant, they upgraded John's Pass. Uh, they also, shortly after that, they come along, they said, well, you know, we've got the restrooms over here, that was actually the John's Pass Village Association had built those restrooms, they weren't paid for by the city, they gave them to the city, but they had to maintain them, and in the new village, they had to maintain the parking, uh, you know, the lights and the little shrubs and things like that, so they said, okay, we're gonna put in parking meters to pay for all that. Now, when parking meters first come in, we were all in an uproar, oh my gosh, this can't be, you know, but we were promised by the commissioner, the sitting commissioner at that time, um, I believe his name was Tom, I don't remember his last name, um, you know, but it, but they all sat there and they said, hey, this money will stay in the village. And since then, we went on for years and years and years, and none of that money has ever stayed in the village, we supplement everything in the city, it comes from the village, it's kinda like, it's kinda like having a bad marriage between the merchants and the meters. You know, the meters don't like the merchants, the merchants don't like the meters, we can't do, we can't do without the meters because you own the property that's on, it was given to you free, and you're, we're under your thumb, we have to do whatever you do. Whenever you raise the meter price, that kinda, that affects us and the amount of people that come, I know you don't feel like it does, but it does, we have people out there all day that, that, you know, they come in, they complain about the meters, they complain about the parking. The local people, it doesn't make them any difference, because guess what, you've exempted them. We have about 50 employees, every one of them, if we can't park them in our parking lot in the back, where we have 22 places, if we double park, they have to go pay to park someplace, the residents there have to go pay to park someplace, even I have to go pay to park someplace. I have a building here that I pay 42,000 a year in property tax on, but when I come to the beach, I, I gotta look around, where am I gonna park, oh, I'm gonna have to pay here, I'm gonna have to pay here, we're not exempt from that, but the rules that you make for us, we have to live by them, we, we can't fight them, all we can come up here and do is lay on the floor and, and beg, you know, please don't do this to us, this is something else that we have to, if you're gonna raise, and, and you've already decided you're gonna raise the parking lot, you know, the meters, then at least allocate some of it back to us, to where we have upgrades, I mean, we're lucky to get a new trash can down there now, it gets to be ridiculous. Thank you.
Mr. Evans, is there any we can change that? At least give them 25%, maybe take a little bit off where the infrastructure is, because we depend on John's Pass a lot, I mean, they are our main source of tourism, and we need to watch out for these people, they're good business owners, and we need to take care of them. Now, if we can just change it a little bit, and do the infrastructure and the cosmetics for the city down to 25%, and let's give the 25% back to John's Pass.
If, if it, if it is the pleasure of the board, there's, there's a couple of things that, uh, options you do have. Uh, one, you can definitely, uh, look at the distribution that you have here as part of the, uh, resolution, or as part of the budget process, you can decide that you would like to see a portion of the revenue that's, the existing revenue that's collected be allocated for, specifically for John's Pass and its, uh, improvements that are, that are needed in that area. So you have two different ways you can, you can handle it, you can set an allocation associated with the increase that you're proposing, or you can utilize, you can do it as part of your budget process with the available funds that you have, and, and that's a way to, to accomplish effectively the same thing, but it really is the pleasure of the board, there's a way to do that if, if the board desires to do so.
And I, I agree with that, I think that, um, the, the John's Pass Village, I mean, I live right there, it's my front door, you know, it's my front yard. I do think that those, um, the needs, uh, do need to be met for John's Pass Village, but I do think that they should be met with our operational, um, budget, I don't think that they should come out of this, in other words, I think that when we're working on our budget process, for many years, we had a, lack of better anything, I guess, it was called a John's Pass Village Fund, okay, and it operated much like the sanitation fund or like the other funds that we have, um, and it was very effective, I, I really don't remember why, how many years ago it was gone, but a certain amount of money was certainly allocated, you know, back into the village, and a lot of people might not agree with that, you know, but it must've worked for a while, so I would like to, to see that, I'd like to keep it firm where we are now, uh, the, you know, the 25 cents going, you know, still staying in the, uh, debt service and 25 cents going to infrastructure, and actually, that doesn't mean that John's Pass would be excluded from that additional 25 cents, if you think about it, because if it's infrastructure needs, you know, and that comes first on the, the calendar, on the docket, and that proves to be very important, then that's where it goes.
And I, I agree with you 100%, because, you know, it doesn't say infrastructure, aesthetics, and cosmetic for every place except for John's Pass.
That's correct.
You know, it's like, when I read that, I was assuming it's like for any place in the city, and if John's Pass needs it, or wherever needs it, it would go there, that's kinda the way I, I looked at the whole thing.
And, and what, I, and I just thought of another, another way as well, if, if the board so chooses that you have the resolution that says 50% goes to debt service and 50% to community aesthetics or what have you, you can say that a portion of that 50 cents that is to community aesthetics, 25% of that or 15% of that will be earmarked exclusively for John's Pass, you can do that, it, it just depends on how you wish to do that, or just doing some rough math, if you take the 413,000 dollars that we're looking to, uh, receive with this particular increase, if you wanted to say that you wanted to put 20% of what that amount is, it roughly, I think, is about $82,000, when we go through the budget process, you can say, Mr. City Manager, I expect when you bring the budget to us, that you have projects that affect the pass to the tune of $82,000 to address some of the challenges we have there with some lighting and some planters and, and streetscape and hardscape and those types of things, you really have a lot of flexibility, uh, depends on what direction the board wants to go, staff can put, uh, monies aside and bring you projects to a threshold at minimum, not to exceed 15 or 20% of what that 413,000 dollars, it really depends on how the board wishes to, to handle it, you know.
I, I kinda like your suggestion, I'm not sure, I got your numbers there, but 50%, well, let's say 20, 50% of the, the monies would go, as we said, to the debt service, the other 50%, I would say, as you suggest, to take a part of that, it all still goes to infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, but part of that will go to John's Pass, and also, at the same time, commit ourselves during our budget process to include, you know, more budget money for them. I'm not sure where that number should be there, uh, maybe of that.
So if we take, for instance, that, the proposed 200 and...
200,000.
200,000 or 206, yeah, 200, 206, 205.
Say, um...
Alright, so, um...
Somewhere between 50 and 100,000.
So if you have, because right now, it's basically 206,500 is earmarked for debt service, and that, that's one, and then you have, in essence, 206,500 that you have for infrastructure and other, uh, capital investments, so you can say that out of that money, you expect that infrastructure, cosmetics, specifically to the, the, the language that staff has provided, that you wanna see that done in John's Pass, so if you wanna say 206, if you wanna say half of that, or if you wanna say a third of that, you know, whatever the board's pleasure is, staff can make sure that we, uh, put together capital, a capital projects plan to address the, the beautification and some of the cosmetic things that need to happen over at the Pass, and we can, we can easily do that.
So if that 200,000, I would say, somewhere between a third and a half should go to the John's Pass Village. Thoughts?
So you're saying 25% will go towards the infrastructure, we're still gonna keep 50% to debt services, and then we're gonna earmark 25% for John's Pass?
Out of that, out of that 50% that's remaining, if the board chooses to say that they wanted to get, uh, add that 25 cents of that 50 cents to go to John's Pass, it would be spent in the John's Pass geographical area, and it would be for cosmetic and infrastructure and capital needs, um, so it won't be for any type of operational cost, it would be specific to the items that were communicated, uh, cosmetics, infrastructure, capital, those types of things, if it's, if it's the board's pleasure, we can, we can make that change.
Okay, I, I don't agree with it, um, I think that it, there certainly is a need, but I really do believe that we can use our, um, operational, um, that we can figure it all in on the budget, and that, that would be the fairest way to do it, because that's, if we, if we do, if we start re- reallocating like that, and even further allocate, then we're really limiting ourselves. Now, I know it's a decent amount, okay, but we are limiting ourselves.
I know what you're saying, and I think there is some, something to be said for that, because one of my concerns is we do have a lot of capital needs coming up, and one of those is a generator, and, you know, that's, that's really important.
One, one of the things that we can do is if the...
And it's not budgeted for.
Well, a- and, and the board can, can certainly, like I said, you have the opportunity through the budget process to allocate, um, monies towards, uh, you know, we're gonna earmark the funds, so 50 cents or 50% is going to capital, or going towards debt service, the other 50 cents, those are monies that you, or 50%, those are monies that you can utilize as part of the budget process to say, okay, here's the projects that I'm gonna say are John's Pass projects, and we can see what the total of that is, and you can pull that out of the monies that you've earmarked or available budget funds. Uh, the finance director is doing some homework for me, but currently, we have 452,000 dollars that's sitting in fund balance from our BP, um, settlement monies. Those monies, I would say, would be to mitigate against the damages that the, the city experienced and the business community and tourism experienced, associated with the oil spill. Director Pierce is doing some research to find out what those monies can be utilized for, I think that would be a great opportunity to say, if we find out that it can be utilized for infrastructure improvements that help a entity, or help the, the village that is a huge tourism engine for our community, that would be a great opportunity to spend a portion of that money to make the infrastructure cosmetic improvements, and that's not reoccurring money, that's, you know, one ti- if you go in there, you make, if, you know, we go in there and we make improvements to roadways or streetscape or landscape, you're only buying that once, and that's not something that's a reoccurring payment, so there's some things that through the budget process, we can provide to the board, but it can't, the board can provide staff direction that you would like for us to find at minimum, 50 or 60,000 dollars as part of the budget process, to see cosmetic or infrastructure improvements at John's Pass, so when we're getting ready to put together the budget process, I can say, well, here's 80,000, 50,000, or 100,000 worth of projects that we've identified in the past, and you can say, okay, then Director Pierce, City Manager Evans, we'd like to see, um, you utilize X, and we'll find, we'll identify the appropriate funding stream, but if the board says at minimum, we wanna see you put aside 50 or 60,000, we can do that, that's something we can do, so, as part of the budget process.
Yeah, that, that's the way I...
And Commissioner Duffin made a good point, this isn't saying that we're excluding spending any of this money on, on that.
Oh, definitely not, we're not excluding them at all, I mean, it's, it's very foremost in my mind, I'll be honest with you, I tell you that, um, I mean, it is, it's my front yard, so I'm very concerned about it too, but I, I just think that we have more options, I guess, the other way, I want to, to be able to do it, I guess, what I feel is the...
And it would be doing it without muddy in the water, is also.
Mr. Evans, is this something that we can, um, workshop? Because you said, Mr. Pierce is putting together some figures and everything, so we can actually look at it to compare and get a better idea as to what's there?
Absolutely.
Instead of making a decision tonight?
Absolutely, um, and, and you have an opportunity to workshop, or to, to discuss this again, because we're bringing the ordinance back on second reading, so this, if this item is tabled or effectively postponed till the next regular meeting, uh, we can bring it back, and then I would have a clear understanding of what that BP money can be spent for, and then you can say, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to see 100,000 of this money earmarked for cosmetic improvements, and we would be able to provide you, um, a clear definition of that, so this is something that you don't have to take action today, because it won't even take effect till after the second reading of the ordinance, which happens in, uh, in June, so...
Okay.
If it's the pleasure of the board, we can certainly, uh, postpone that and schedule it for the next regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners, and I will have a clear understanding of what the BP monies can be spent for, and then what other available funding sources we have, and then I can a- actually show you the entire picture of the revenue that's generated associated with the parking in John's Pass, so you make an apples-to-apples comparison, and you can see the economic impact, and I, I certainly believe, to your point, Commissioner, that probably would be the most, most suitable approach, because you'll have all the details in front of you.
How's that, Mr. Powers, is that okay?
It's a, it's a, it's a start off, thinking, if we make sure it's controlled in the pass, and I don't mean for water, if we told that pass, we need to first, and it'd be allocated, if we don't allocate it, then that means, if something costs 200,000 dollars, the city's not gonna be able to pay that money, they may have 50 appropriated, but if you put it in fund, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a boardwalk repair or something, we'd have to, we'd have to act and accept, and I really do appreciate you backing up, years of, of... I mean, we probably wouldn't say that, but...
Okay. I'll get a better look at it.
And Madam Mayor, by, by effectively adopting a resolution that says where these monies will go, it actually authorized the finance director to, in essence, restrict these funds, so these funds, once they, once we define exactly where they're gonna go, so let's say the board says, well, we want to earmark X amount of thousands of dollars a year in a perpetual care fund to address the cosmetic and safety concerns we have at the Pass, that money is restricted, that money cannot be utilized to, you know, buy anything for fire, or buy anything for sanitation, is restricted and is booked as restricted, so in essence, when we're audited, we'd have to provide documentation that we effectively spent the money in the place that we spent, so by having it by virtue of resolution, it puts the board's authority behind it, and staff can't change it, that is the policy decision from the board, and the only way to review, to remove that is by a subsequent resolution, so you'll have more teeth, and that money will be spoken for, and staff will be held accountable to ensure that it goes where it goes, because your auditor's gonna tell you if it doesn't.
Okay, good.
Alright, so I think where we are then is we're gonna put that on the next workshop, yes?
Yeah, we would just need a motion from the board to, um, schedule this item to come back before the Board of City Commissioners at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
You have a motion?
Okay, I'll make the motion, uh, to put resolution 2018-05 back on the workshop for the next, back on the agenda for the next com- commission workshop, thank you.
Commission meeting.
Excuse me, commission meeting.
No, workshop. We have to workshop.
You, you can, you can workshop it, or you can have it as part of the, um, regular meeting that you're gonna be effectively adopting the fee ordinance, if you wanna put it on a workshop, we would bring it back to the May meeting, the May 22nd meeting, because then we would roll it, because I'd like for it concurrently to go with the fee ordinance on the second and final reading, I don't wanna separate them, because that's how things get lost in, in cyberspace, and tho- that, that ordinance, that resolution needs to be married to that ordinance, and so...
Contingent on it.
Yeah, it's contingent on it, so I don't wanna separate it from...
So this would be at a regular Board of Commission meeting?
Yeah, we would bring it back at a regular Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, I'll correct... All right, I'll correct my, my motion then. I'd like to make the motion to put Resolution 2018-05 on the next Board of Commission meeting.
Do we have a second? There's a motion. I have a... First, do we have a second? No?
I'll second it.
All right. Any comment, any, the floor didn't open for public comment. Or, okay, yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. You've already spoken on this subject, so you can't speak again. Thank you.
Mad, Madam Mayor, if, if I may, yeah, because I've heard some, some comments or remarks from the public, there's nothing that precludes you from talking about it at a regular meeting. A workshop item is, you have the same, in a workshop, you actually cannot vote. You're going to give staff consensus. If you bring it back at a regular meeting, the public is still furnished the opportunity to talk, and then you could effectively adopt whatever direction the board wants to make or whatever decision the board wants to make. So there's nothing that precludes you from having a more substantive discussion and staff providing you the data and the information to make an informed public policy decision. It's just that, the only difference between a workshop discussion and a Board of City Commissioners is that you can actually vote on the item. And the reason that we want it on the meeting is because we want it to be married with the fee ordinance. We don't want it to be...
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
That wasn't the issue. It, it's just that, that we were saying he was not allowed to speak because he had already spoken on this issue.
No, I, I think there were some concerns about if you had it on a workshop, that there wouldn't be...
No, I understood all that.
Yeah.
It's fine. Yes.
Gay Prince, same address.
Please state just for the record.
14045 Marguerite Drive.
Thank you.
Now, I wanted to thank you all for, because I understood from previous comments that there was concern that people were afraid to come up and talk to the commissioners. I would like to thank you for listening to them and showing them that you would listen to what they had to say. And another concern was putting it in writing, what you would propose to do for Johns Pass because it had never been done before. So you showed your integrity by listening to people and their concerns and show them now also about putting it in writing. And I'd like to thank you very much. And I also understood that they're afraid to come here. So I know there's sunshine law, but couldn't you all go to a meeting in Johns Pass? Mohammed, instead of Mohammed going to the mountain, the mountain going to Mohammed, so they would feel more comfortable?
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Public comment is now closed. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes, next meeting.
Mayor Blak?
Yes. And I believe you are now ready for ordinance 2018-04, Amendment to Nonconforming Structures. First reading, Director Porta.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. We tried all kinds of things, and I ended up emailing it to myself at the University of Florida, so we are now using their GoGators.
Does, um, City Court need to read the ordinance first?
Need to read the ordinance?
Ordinance 2018-04, An Ordinance of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, Amending Part II Code of Ordinances, Chapter 110, Zoning, Article III, Nonconformances, Section 110-93, Intent Concerning Nonconforming Properties, Structures, and Uses, Allowing for Approval of Extensions and Improvements to Nonconforming Residential Structures Under Certain Conditions and Based on Findings of Consistency With Neighborhood Character, Non Conflict with Neighboring Properties, And as Needed to Provide Expanded and Improved Affordable Housing Opportunity and Quality, Finding the Amendment Consistent with the City Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Reading by Title Only, Providing for Severalability, Providing for Repealing Clause, And Providing for an Effective Date.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I'm going to take you on a little trip around town because I know that you had questions about what the real impacts of this were. We did discuss it at the workshop meeting, and you wanted me to give you a real sense of what the real impact was. So I'm going to jump around a little bit, but to specify, the intent here is that in, oh, and it went away.
Change that.
It's one of our neighborhoods.
There we go. In recognition of the narrow lot dimensions and the pre-existing development patterns in some of our older neighborhoods, it's maybe appropriate for you to decide that we need exceptions to the setback requirements. What has happened throughout ti- time is that most of, many of your homes were already developed when the setbacks were put in place, which made, in some cases, made the existing homes nonconforming at the time those setbacks were adopted. In addition, over the years, you have not provided your own planning and review, and when it was being provided by outside sources such as the county, I don't believe they were taking any consideration of local code and were approving homes on lots over top of and into setbacks in all directions. As, as a result, there are many legal nonconforming residential structures on lots of 50 feet in width or less in R2 and R3 zoning districts in particular. At one point, I did do a count, and in R2, 40% of, no, 80% of our lots are only 40 feet in, in width. So it's very difficult. There are a lot of nonconformities. To give you a sense of the impact, if it's still there, and it seems I may have lost it, but we can use Google. There are many places in town. It works a lot better when we look at the property appraiser site just because that site has, it, it kicked me off. That site has property lines drawn on it. But sometimes you can see, just looking at the situation here from the air, that we have many, many nonconforming situations where houses are... Oops, it's not showing up for you there.
It's not following you.
It's not following me. If I close it, we won't get it back, okay? This is what we'll do. We'll do this first all the way through, and then we'll come back, and I'll close it. See if it'll follow me now. Definite communication problems. Nope, it's not paying any attention to me at all now. Oh, boy. Okay. Extensions. What we have, what I'm proposing is that extensions along a line of an existing side yard encroachment should be considered by the Planning Commission for approval, provided that, and if you had an opportunity to read all the underlying portion of the code, and we did discuss it, provided that they had the, there was no increase further into the setback, that a minimum of three feet of setback from a structural wall is retained on, on one side of the house and a minimum of five on the other. And I explained that the other day to us to make sure that you can access the back of the yard for maintenance or emergency reasons. That side structure, that the side where the structure is, is reduced, where the setback is being reduced, that, that side in particular, the house has to have a roof gutter system that's adequate to cover, to carry all the drainage from the roof so that it can be directed away from the neighboring property. That's a problem that we have in many of our nonconforming situations where houses are right next to each other. Many don't even have gutters, and the roof runs off right onto somebody else's property and creates washout situations alongside yards or against houses. So this would be an opportunity, actually, in extending the nonconformity would also make them, you know, install a gutter system for the roof and also to look at any other drainage systems. Since they'll be extending into the yard, if the yard is not graded properly, that can be addressed as well. So generally, the, this is an opportunity to fix drainage problems if they exist. The extension along, the other condition with the extensions along an existing encroachment line can be approved only if the neighbors on the extending encroachment side indicate support of the extension by notarized statement. And then we have a statement that nothing in this is an approval that creates a new nonconformity. So if there's no nonconformity along that one edge of the house, you can't decide to create a new one. Now, the reason for the neighbor approval is that we have, we have come, kind of some systems in place that allow this sort of thing to happen anyway. Currently, we allow in our redevelopment program that you can go to the planning, the Planning Commission and then to the commission to ask for approval to build a new home on an existing footprint, even if that footprint has nonconformities and encroachments. So we have some history of allowing that in the case where we want some improvement of the structure. Of course, that's an incentive to get people to tear down old houses and build new ones up, but we also need to be thinking in terms of not, not only meeting FEMA requirements but providing opportunities for improvement of our existing housing structure and affordability. We have a system in place where if people want to extend their docks beyond the, the distance that's normally allowed by the code, or if they want to place it closer to one side or one property neighbor than the other or towards the middle, that they can vary from the code if they get the approval of that owner. So we have both of those kind of systems in place for dealing with, with new construction, and this gives the opportunity for those who would be impacted by the encroachment to be heard and to cooperate in that. Now, that's, this would be requiring a Planning Commission approval. They would be acting in a quasi-judicial standing or situation when they reviewed this, so it would not need to go beyond then, would not need to come to you for little encroachments, but they would have an appeals process that went to the magistrate. So you have to decide whether you think that the neighborhoods, the neighbors sign off is, is required when you have a public hearing because it would be a public hearing, or if you think that just the public hearing by itself is adequate. Because I believe that people with these encroachments are of both opinions. Additions of a second floor to a legal nonconforming structure in the R2, R1, R2, or R3 district would be permitted as long as the extension does not create a new encroachment, does not violate the height restrictions, provides for a minimum of 18 inches clearance between any building element and the property line, and does not increase the depth into an existing encroachment. The neighbor on the side, side or facing property where the encroachment is proposed to be heightened would indicate by notarized statement their support for the addition. We have situations where we have single family, single-story homes. People would like to put an addition on, but have not been able to because the, some portion of the house encroaches into a setback. And in those cases, the setback's been in place for years. They're not actually going to go further into the setback. They're just going up from it. There are general conditions proposed, one that no permanent improvement of any kind, including mechanical equipment or storage units, may exist or be placed or installed in the five-feet clearance along the, the entire side of the structure because we don't want situations where people have got a five-foot clearance, but they've got a mechanical equipment out there into two and a half to three feet of it, and you can't get through there anyway. It's a problem for emergency management. Also, that that would include not blocking it with landscaping. It can have a gate through there and a fence, but it need to have a gate. The required clearance area is not a reduction of the setback, so this, it's a minimum clear path, and that nothing in the provision can be used to approve the creation of a new nonconformity. And I think I stated that before. I wanted to give you a little sense of, one of the, the houses that I was just talking about specifically. And you can't see these still, so let me close this out. And everything goes away. There we go. All right, so this is along Boca Sierra, and you can see that the houses are really close together. Sometimes they're almost touching. And in the houses on the interior lots, especially where you have back-to-back houses, all of these that are back-to-back would be nonconforming for rear yard setbacks. They were just made nonconforming by the development. This particular house is one that I could tell you more about. It's, it has, they, they would like to be able to put a second story on, but cannot because although you can see there's a good 20 feet between the house and the roadway, the requirement for the setback is 20 feet from the property line, which is actually 10 feet back. So in a lot of places, the property lines are pretty far back off of the roadway, and the houses are almost all nonconforming. This one, obviously, this is easily nonconforming for the front. This one looks like it's set back far enough. But as you go down the block, you can see that there's one structure after another placed in the front yard. Even the new house is, I don't know how that got permitted. But this is a, a new house with a great big garage right up against the front of the property, probably because the wedge-shaped lot, there may have been a variance involved. But again, your house is right up close, even the new ones. And then also, you can see that sometimes the houses, as I said, are so close that they're almost touching. Especially in the case with the smaller ones. You can see here, there's a property line in there somewhere. This is all over town. You can see here, sometimes houses are actually over top of somebody's property line, and they've just learned to live with each other. But we have these situations seriously everywhere. I could take you on a, a Google tour all night long, and we could look at one situation after another where people are literally right on top of each other. You can see how close some of these are. So in those cases, one problem is that, let me see if I can get back. This is some samples I showed at the plan board. And what happens is, in a case like this, where maybe there's a lot of people along the block that also have an encroachment into this front setback, this person would not be able to fill in that. It probably wouldn't hurt anybody if they did, honestly. But, but they can't because this is over the front yard encroachment. This one here would not be able to cover over the porch or, or if it was already screened in and framed in, they couldn't put glass in it because they could make no kind of improvement to it because it's encroaching on one side. This one is, is just out of luck, and that maybe looks silly that I did that, but we have them all over town with the corners facing or coming over the property line. And you can see that there's, there's really no direction in which this could be expanded, although it's one of the smaller houses. They could put a little bit of an addition on here before hitting the back, but as they came across the, the back of the house, they'd have to cut it short because otherwise they would encroach on this here. So here's one where, as an example, it's encroaching in more than one direction. And so anywhere along the back... And so anywhere along the back would have to stop short. I have all kinds of situations where people come in all the time. We do have a, we have a system in place that allows for an administrative waiver. I have to go through all of the same findings that the variance would in order to issue that, and it's only for 15%. And I don't know if I've been able to. I had some more presentations here, but they have apparently gone away. I was going to show you, I scanned in a bunch of plans today. The house that I showed you at, at 343 Boca Siega, I'm pretty sure that the property owner wouldn't mind, because we've been talking about it for a long time. The one that was a single family wanted to add on to a second story. There's, there's just, one of the things we have to consider when people want to add on is even if they have room on one side of the house, doesn't mean that's the right place for it, because if you put the addition on the wrong place, it costs more where you extend the roof, all of that. We're talking about improvements that can't trip that 50%. So sometimes, for instance, somebody may want to just put an addition out the back of the house and they could move it over, but in order to move it over, they would also have to reroute all of the electrical service in the house. That would, that would make it too expensive. Maybe they'd be entering the room in the wrong location. The, the roof extension wouldn't be the most convenient or expeditious way to build or would require unusual sized lumber. All of that sort of thing plays into the cost of any kind of improvement. So allowing for a little flexibility here would be a big help. I do have somebody who, who wants to add on to the back, they just want to fill in a porch and the porch is there, I just can't let them fill it in because when they do, they will be 25% encroaching and, and I can only approve for 15. It, it's been there for years and, and the neighbors have said they don't care, but I can't let them glass it in to capture that space because there's no flexibility in the code. So I, I'm really encouraging you to, to think about the number of nonconformities we have. They really are all over town. If, if you ever are interested, we can do some driving around or I can show you on the property appraisal site that shows you even more clearly where the property lines are and just how close people are sitting to each other. Are there any questions? I know we talked about this quite a bit in the past.
Linda, I think that we might have brought this up before, but since you've been here the short time that you've been here, how many times have you been approached by property owners to, to want, you know, who, who are asking for something more than 15%? Forty times, 50 times?
I don't remember what I said the other day. I kind of ran through it in my head. I, in terms of-
I was thinking sort of 50, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's probably, I've been here eight, eight or nine months. It's, it happens at least once a week, somebody comes in with hopes to do, now, sometimes I can help them figure out a better way to do their addition, or different anyway. Sometimes it's better and they're happy about having gone through the consultation. If I can help them figure out how to do it, I will. But there are a lot of these situations, like the, the one at, at 343 where they've tried, actually, they've come through, they've even asked for a variance, but the property is not itself nonconforming and so they didn't qualify for a variance. So they've, they've tried various types of additions and in this case, the addition is going to require an elevator because of handicap needs. And if they put it all on the back of the house, they'll lose all of the living room and all of the existing bedrooms with the staircases and the elevator. You lose the whole downstairs of the house to build the second part of the house. So it, it does, it doesn't make any sense. You know, sometimes you look at it and realize this is really the only realistic situation for them and we just, we don't have any flexibility with that. I think if we had the hearing process in place, it's not something that we're going to be giving out casually. Everybody who is affected would be noticed and so they'll have an opportunity to come in and talk to the planning commission about it and, and the neighbors would be able to weigh in, whether they have to sign off on it or not, they would still have the opportunity for public hearing. I think that there are a lot of protection and, in, in what we're proposing that would keep it from becoming a big problem.
I've, I've walked around all these neighborhoods, all the way down to Madera Avenue, you know, and, and especially in Boca Siega and in, in my district. And I really think that what we're, what we're proposing here, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done on it, but I do think that what you're proposing here will make our neighborhoods better neighborhoods. I think it will, it'll encourage people to stay in their homes longer, will still be affordable because they don't have to sell out, they can add something if they need a, you know, another room or whatever, if they're going straight up like at 343 is. And I just think that it will encourage people to stay in Madera Beach, especially a lot of the people that have been here for many, many years and have had that nonconforming, you know, situation and can't get out of it, but it will keep them in their homes. They won't have to sell out and somebody come in and, you know, build a gigantic thing. And I think we need to build an inventory of those types of homes, so that's why I think it's good. And you certainly have protected the neighbors by requiring, you know, certain rules that have to be complied, so it's just not willy nilly like a lot of the neighborhoods are now. So I think it's good. I thank you for it.
I believe that there were some people here to speak.
Okay.
When you're ready.
The floor is now for public comment.
My name is Kathy Collier. I live at 13145 Third Street East. I know some of you, but I haven't met you yet. Welcome. I want to show you a picture which will explain why I'm so grateful to Linda for what she's doing. I have, my parents bought a house in the 80s, I'm sorry, it's so dry.
Just give them the clerk, though, personally.
I'm sorry? Okay. I've been trying to put it together since then, they were in their 90s and everything I touch falls off, so now little by little, I'm putting together, so I'm all about improvements. But my neighbors to my left, in 2014, permitted and everything, put in pool and pavers. And what you're looking at is my driveway after the first summer rain as a result of their pool and pavers. Shortly thereafter, the property behind me permitted and everything. Now that's commercial, four cottages, weekly rentals, big pool, pavers. So I became their retention pond. What you're looking at right there is my driveway, when the first house on my left put pools and pavers in, and then within 30 days, same contractor oddly enough, put in the pool behind me. So I was doomed. I'd be, truly, I had to put rubber fishing boots on to step off my deck. Now, this is not even talking about expanding, you know, in a nonconformance like Linda's talking, this is just flat out above board. To the credit of the city, knowing they were a little bit culpable, and, and they have corrected all of that since then. We made efforts to change, alter the terrain of my yard, dumped some dirt, re-sod it, put in a swale to kind of facilitate runoff to the street. But it's four years later and I still have root rot in my yard because both of those properties were allowed to elevate for the pool. And coincidentally, the property on my left has a very definite little trench drain or whatever, so that when it rains, the rain didn't go into their kitchen, it dumps into my driveway. So now they want to add on another room. And so now we're talking about them qualifying under this new provision that, that Linda's talking about. And to her credit, she factored in that little caveat about let the neighbors know, give me a heads up. I don't care if you build a Taj Mahal, but not if I have to suffer the consequences of your improvement, which is clearly code. Neighbor A does not get to cause damage to neighbor B. And I have the right to the quiet, peaceful use of my own property, which I don't have Sorry to say, neither one of them has stepped up to offer to help pay for the shell that I had to put in my driveway, or the marble chips that I had to pay for to try to, you know, keep it dry a little bit. So I'm just, you know, I'm just, like I say, I'm, I'm their retention pond. So with regard to, and truly Linda and Al Curry, you're really doing great things to prevent that from happening to anybody else with regards to the terrain and the runoff and all of this and gutters. I just implore you to make sure, to be very careful how you decide on this and to keep the neighbors in mind because things get happening so fast with or without permits. And I just think I want to know if someone's going to be making significant changes to their property and their, or construction in any way. So I just was eager to come up here and speak my piece because this is a big deal. It's a small town and we love it. We don't want to lose the character and we have a wonderful neighborhood over there and we just, you know, all respect and love each other and it's a living testimony of diversity that works in that little neighborhood where we are. But I was, I was devastated by that. So. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, the floor is now closed for public comment. Any more discussion from the board?
Well, if there's no questions from the board, I would like to make a motion to start the wheels moving on ordinance number 2018 dash four, amending the code of ordinance article three, section 11093, the intent being nonconformities, property, structures and uses to provide changes and expansions to structures with setback encroachments with restrictions based on performance-based measures.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion from the board? Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
We have no contracts or agreements. Next, we have new business, and that would be a quarterly investment report in March 2018 financial report from Finance Director, Mr. Pierce.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, the invest, I'll try to be brief. We have a, the Finance Department is presenting its financial report through the end of March, and this was sent to the commission through hard copy and electric copy. The investment report is done on a quarterly basis and each one of you should have received the one page of the investment report. In this report, this report states or shows that the current holdings are approximately 18.9 million, which represents a significant increase from the previous or last quarter in FY 2017 by over 200, over 727,000. This can be seen as the, the investment account within Hancock increased from seven, 7 million, 78,531 to a little over 7.7 million. The main reason for this increase is due to the ad valorem revenues received. And just to give the commission a little bit of a breakdown on the ad valorem received, through March, we received a little over 2.2 million. And through the end of April, it was over 2.3 million. So we're right on track on receiving the ad valorem. The, the investment report basically shows that we have a good distribution of money in money market funds and Bank United, 4.2 million, and Florida Community Bank, money market funds, 4.6 and, and 1 million. The, we do not have any funds in CDs at this present time. We did toward the end of FY 2017, we had three CDs. They went toward paying down the Series 2014 debt. And going forward in the next month or two, we will be putting more money in, in CDs to have more of a balance and also strategically to pay future payments on the Series 2014. And with that, I, I can tell you right now, in addition to the investment report, one more thing on the investment report, so the revenues are increasing, the, the expenditures are kind of holding a little constant because some of our projects are not still in a holding pattern. The undergrounding, the second phase has, is just about to get started. Also, the resurfacing of Gulf Boulevard is going to be started pretty soon as well. And we've made, I believe, one payment to Rex, Rex Place and another, another one is, is on its way. I can tell you right now, and to echo what the city manager indicated, that the city is in good, strong fiscal position right now. And I wanted to mention one other thing, that it is our desire or hope that at the next workshop on the 22nd, that our auditor, John Howes, will be presenting the audit for FY 2017. Is there any questions?
No questions? Thank you for taking such good care of our money. Any discussion from the staff or from the commission? This is something we have to vote on, is that, that's correct?
No, this is just for informational purposes only.
All right, next we have creation of a public information specialist for fiscal year 2018 and 2019. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of City Commissioners, this item before you is the creation of a public information specialist for FY 2000, remainder of FY 2018 and FY 2019. As communicated at the Board's retreat, it is the desire for the organization to focus on communicating directly with the residents, businesses and visitors to our community. So we wanted to dedicate the appropriate resources to focus on our public message to ensure transparency and better website management and social media management. Currently, the city's website is in a state of disrepair. There are some significant improvements that will definitely have to be made, but what we're going to be doing is bringing forward a potential redesign of the website at our next workshop to discuss that in more detail. Because of the obsolete nature of the content and our inability to put real-time information and real-time updates, it hasn't served as the communication repository that we would want it to serve as. Also, with some of the information that we want to put out as far as what is occurring citywide, what are some of the policy decisions that the Board of City Commissioners is discussing, and really focusing on our branding, our messaging, and how we interact with the public, this particular position will in essence be the torchbearer for us on our communication strategies. They will assist the city manager's office as well as the Board of Commissioners and department directors in assembling information and communicating exactly what's happening in their government. Our goal is to be the most transport, transparent agency in Pinellas County and hopefully one day in the state of Florida, but by utilizing this position to help us push our messages out proactively is something that is a major desire of administration. that is a major desire of administration as well as the Board of City Commissioners. This particular individual will be the content manager for the website, will manage the social media presence, will help us assemble information for the distribution of the City Manager Report, will help write what we call, or we're calling, a board recaps. So at the end of a board meeting, they will be the individual that will be responsible for highlighting some of the items that were discussed at a meeting such as this evening and communicating that with the public. They will be monitoring all our social media platforms from Nextdoor all the way up to Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and all the other items that are out there. We want to allow for more interactivity with our residents. We want to allow for more open and transparent responses with the public and to know that we want to make sure that they're informed and they're knowledgeable. Most recently, we put out our first installment of the City Manager Report to the public. And traditionally, when you do send out information via an email blast, you may get a 14% click rate where somebody clicks on it. We were well over 50% and folks have communicated that they appreciated the information. So we really want to push information out to the public as much as possible. We want to put out information about special events. We want to be able to communicate our press releases and have information easily accessible to the public. This person will also look at some of the agenda items and information that we communicate in board meetings and make sure that we're effectively communicating in a way that the public can understand what we're trying to accomplish. So we see this as a very valuable tool and a very valuable asset in our communications infrastructure and our communications team that we're looking to build. I still would work with the press with this particular individual hand-in-hand. They will kind of help with some of the behind-the-scenes operational aspects. They will also be required to deliver quantifiable and qualifiable items to the board to show the benefits of this position. As you can see in the agenda item, I said for the remainder of this fiscal year and fiscal year 19, there's going to be measurable goals. In the event that this particular position doesn't accomplish the measurable goals and the board doesn't think it is successful in what is intended to accomplish, this position would effectively go away in fiscal year 2020. So the individual that would have to be selected for this position has to be somebody that is engaged, energetic, enthusiastic, and is going to assist in communicating with the city, looking at our relationship with our business community, communicating, highlighting some of the local area businesses and some of the things we have in our community, really putting out our story, telling our message. And that's something that governments traditionally don't do a very good job on. They will also be required, as part of the job description, is to become a certified public information officer, where in the event that we activate our emergency operations center, they will work hand-in-hand with myself, the fire chief, and law enforcement and our department directors to ensure that we're communicating with the public in real time. And so this position, I see it as a very vital tool, but it's going to be a tool that we're going to utilize in a way that we're going to have some deliverables and some measurables, so you will be able to see the benefits associated with this. It will not increase the budget. We have the funds already available. It would just require just for, just some allocation differences, but it will not increase the budget and it will not cost the organization any more than what we've already have. So we're working within the existing budget. And in fiscal year 2019, we're not recommending any increase to be able to fund that position. So based on my conversation with the Finance Director and communicating with other department directors, this is a very valuable addition to the team, and we think that it will allow for us to really take our communication piece to the next level. And at this time, staff stands prepared to answer any question and recommends approval.
I think it's a good idea. I think we need to try it. I think that we have gotten so big in this world. I mean, everything is just so global and yet it's still so little. And there are so many sources that you can get all this information from. I think it's important, and I'm glad that Jonathan put in there about the measurability of it and the, you know, qualifying it. It's just not another person to be on staff, and that's what I certainly, you know, gave a lot of consideration to. But I think we need to try it.
And in today's world, we need to be able to get our information out there quickly.
Pardon?
We need to, today's world, we need to get our information out there quickly and correctly.
We do, and we need someone who is specific about that, someone who is knowledgeable about it, who knows what we want, who's not scattered, who doesn't have anything else to, well, to take up that time. You know, we need someone to really devote to that position, and I think that's important. And I think it will help our community, and I think it will help us going forward.
Mr. Evans, this has been done before?
Yes, yes. This has been done in other communities that I've been a part of, and it has been something that traditionally works within the communications and marketing function or reports directly to the City Manager. But yes, ma'am.
Any more discussion? The item is now open for public comment?
Oh, I was gonna, I'm sorry. I was gonna ask one thing. Jonathan, how do you intend to advertise it? How do you, what are your sources?
We're going to put this particular position on our website and then utilize some of our social media platforms, because those folks that are in tune in the communications industry, we have to go kind of where they are. And so that's going to be one, or that's going to be two of the mechanisms we're going to utilize. But also, I'm going to get with the HR coordinator to determine where they normally post jobs and positions on their job board, et cetera. So, yeah, we'll work with HR.
Yes.
Helen Carter, 5,000 Miramar Drive. This is a good idea, but not giving the money back to John's Pass is a terrible idea. Where are we getting the money to fund this?
Anybody else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, do we need a motion, Jonathan?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'll make a motion to create a public information specialist based on all the criteria that City Manager has placed before us, the draft of the job title and the descriptions, the responsibilities.
Any more discussion? The City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next we have City Clerk's six-month probationary period performance evaluation. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board of City Commissioners, the item before you this evening is the City Clerk's six-month probationary evaluation. The City Clerk joined the organization on October 16, 2017, and has been part of the organization ever since then. Attached to the agenda item are the performance evaluations and the scoring that was provided by the Board of City Commissioners. And overall, the ranking for the clerk is definitely between, it exceeds standards and meets standards. I can tell you from my experience working with this clerk in the short time that I've been part of the agency, she has established herself as an exceptional team member. She is committed to making sure that the residents are a priority, that the public information and public communication and records are maintained consistent with state statutes, and there's not a task or responsibility that you can assign the City Clerk that she will not jump in and take the lead on and complete it. So I've been extremely pleased with my interactions with the City Clerk. She's somebody of integrity, someone that works very hard and is a valuable team member, and we're very fortunate to have her. And I can tell you through the challenges associated with the recall process, we're very fortunate to have her at the helm to guide us through that because it was a learning process for all of us. And I think I am a better administrator for having a competent and capable City Clerk alongside. So I am definitely excited to work with her and look forward to working with her for many, many more years. That concludes my comments. And, you know, staff is here to answer and address any questions the board may have.
Well, I don't have any questions. I would just like to add on to your comments and to say Clara's first six months here as a City Clerk, she's made order out of chaos that was left by former City Clerks. She's done an excellent job at bringing much-needed technology to the city, the iCompass software. She's always smiling and willing to help and do whatever she can to help the city. And I look forward also to working with Clara to make this city the best it can be. Thank you, Clara.
Thank you for the comment.
Would anyone else wish to speak?
Oh, Clara, you know I like you. You've been, you've been, you've been a lot of help to me, a lot of help, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, I would just like to say also that Clara certainly did get glowing reviews, and they're much warranted, they really are, they're good, you know, and you are good. And I was wondering if it might, if we might consider putting the City Clerk, since this is a six-month review, okay, putting this item or putting an item on the workshop, on the future workshop, to discuss where Clara might stand with regards to her compensation, with regards to other cities, other communities, to make sure that Clara is online because she is so outstanding. And I'd like to know if anybody else feels that that would be a good idea. Put it on a workshop, ask staff to obtain information for us as to other communities about our size and workload, that type of information, and evaluate it. Is that appropriate?
If it's the pleasure of the Board, we can certainly do that.
I think that's certainly very appropriate.
Do you think that's, yeah, I think it's a good idea. Okay.
All right, so we have a consensus to put that on the workshop then. I'm sure you'll agree. Any more discussion?
That concludes my comments.
All right, next we have reports and correspondence. Anything from the City Commission?
No question. We were given this also. Are we going to talk about this at all?
That, that is for the kiosk. That's already out on the streets. That's just your hard copy.
Okay, just for information.
Yep. And the actual submissions are due by May 22.
Wow.
Put on different stations.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. It's unsilent, believe me. It is. Great to see them well.
Just so the audio is clear, since you're holding up something that no one could see, that was the RFP for the kiosk at John's Pass.
Right, John's Pass.
At John's Pass. Looking for someone to operate the kiosk.
Yep. And that's available on our website.
Anybody else on the Commission have any comments?
I would just like to mention that on May the 27th, I know that's several weeks in the dance, but I will hold another, one of my listening tours that Jonathan helped me with in April. I don't know if you'll be available. Will you be available on May the 27th?
Anything for my Commissioners, I'll be there.
Well, thank you very much. I will be at John's Pass Park again from 11 to 1:00. And hopefully, anybody who, you know, chooses not to come to City Hall or for some reason doesn't want to but wants to go to the gazebo area, will be there to listen. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? City Attorney?
Nothing at this time. Nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Just a brief remark. We will make sure that we get that resolution to our folks in Tallahassee. And then if we hear any additional information on that piece of legislation as far as the beach access, we will keep you attuned to that. And then we'll also send that to our other peer agencies to show that we effectively have adopted such a resolution. So that is it. That concludes my comments for this evening.
All right. And City Clerk, do you have any comments?
Yes, I gave the Commission an updated department calendar. And I just want to report that on Monday, May 14, 2018, we're going to have another workshop training here in the Commission chambers, and it's open to the public. It begins at 9:00, and it'll go till about 4:30 in the afternoon. The first session starts at 9:00, which is Public Trust and Mistrust, and the speaker is Scott Payne. And following that, at 10:45, he'll also present on managing negative public participation. And then at 1:00 PM the same day, parliamentary procedure for local government, which will be by Marilyn Karadie, and refreshments and lunch will be provided by the city. And so we welcome everyone to attend this workshop training. And on the calendar, I announced this because, you know, it's, the workshop is not in the regular sequence, on Tuesday, May 15, we have a, our first budget workshop beginning Yes, Tuesday, May 15. And that's here in the chamber, open to the public.
Okay. Anything else? It's 8:46, and the meeting is adjourned. You're free to roam around the building.